You know, I mean, I know that's what people needed to use some salt, but they said, "Oh, just go buy your ring." I'm not buying it. I'm gonna fall before I'm gonna buy that. Throw it next to my stream. I was like, "No, I can't do that."
So I just can't believe some of the things have broken this winter.
Yeah.
Stuff I've never seen broken before.
We just drive this and see fences everywhere.
Yeah, the mailboxes are crushed.
As long as it keeps everything covered, I can postpone looking at what's...
Yeah.
Until it's uncovered.
Yeah.
I think there's a wall at my house that's done. Stone wall.
Mailboxes bungee back, bungee cordy back.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of New Falls Planning Board, March 10th, 2014 meeting. First up on the agenda is review of the minutes of February 24th, 2014.
Do we make a motion to review the minutes and then comment on them?
Yeah, generally you put a motion on it, table, then you have a discussion on it, and then you go from there.
Okay, so I make a motion to review them? Okay, so...
Open for discussion, yep.
On the first page...
Recuse.
Yeah, it says, "Wilmerite asked that Tim Rogers excuse himself from the planning board," not "recuse." That should actually be, "Wilmerite asked that Mike Calamano, the Chair of the Planning Board, excuse Tim Rogers." And then it says that again, it should be corrected again, under "Application Reviews Continue," in the second paragraph. Again, it should just be, "Wilmerite asked that Mike Calamano, the Chair of the Planning Board, excuse Tim Rogers from the Planning Board." Not that Tim Rogers excuse himself.
Yep. I'm okay with that. Any other comments on the minutes?
Nope.
Do we have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
I would.
Those? Motion carries, okay. Next up is public comment on issues other than any open public hearing. You should make any public comments at the Planning Board meeting.
Hi, my name's John Douglas. For two reasons. One, I know you guys are doing your finding statements regarding Wilmerite, and I would just like to reiterate that I would like the finding statements, what I'm about to say should be acknowledged. The college, the college has said that out of their 8,000 students, only half of them are currently housed on campus, which means that 4,000 students currently live off campus. They call them commuters, and commuters need to live within 30 miles of the campus. So that means that the 4,000 students that are currently commuters living off campus with this Wilmerite project of 732 additional bedrooms with the campus, as Jerry Benjamin stated on several occasions, does not plan on increasing enrollment. So if the college does not increase enrollment, and we have an additional 732 bedrooms, we're gonna have a great deal of vacancies throughout New Falls. Now, I know you guys hired a private consultant to come up with the fiscal impact, and I believe from reading it that they addressed the fire and the police services, but they did not address the fiscal impact on the community as it relates to vacancies. I think that this number is far exceeds any amount of services from the police and the fire. So I hope and request that the Board puts this in their finding statements, because this is probably the largest impact that this project's gonna have on the community. And it also ties into our school budget, because as these houses, as the vacancy rate drops in the future after X amount of years, we're gonna have a great deal of students that need to be educated in our public schools. Upwards of 500 students at 22,600 per year. Now, we also have a great deal of people that have accessory apartments in their home currently, and they're depending on the income from those accessory apartments to pay their bills, their taxes, and this project is going to adversely affect them. So I would, I requested you please put that in your finding statement or something along those lines. The other issue is regarding the block line revision, the additional eight acres that's being added to the 43 acres. This is a question as much as it's a statement. Can the Planning Board, does the Planning Board have the authority to just change that block line from an RV district and include some land from an R1 district? And if so, what prevents an applicant in the future that has a little bit of property in, let's say, the light industrial, and now they take an adjacent piece of property in the R1 and do a lot line revision and come up with something that this community really doesn't want?
Oh, we don't change zoning. Okay, so to the effect that it's, we have, actually, we do have property that are split in half between two zones, between a B2 and an R1. And there's restriction what you can do in those zoning areas. So we're not changing zoning, so the additional eight acres that you're talking about does not become an RV district.
It still remains an R1 district?
Yes.
But now you can, you can use all the density in the RV district, because you're no longer required that land, because you have additional land in the R1 district? It doesn't seem, to me, it seems like you're taking apples and oranges and mixing it together and coming out with whichever one you prefer. But thank you.
Okay. Paul?
It's Mike. I wanna thank the Board for its work, and I know what you've done, have done it for many years, they serve as Chair. And I have to say that two weeks ago, this meeting took on a surreal flavor that I don't understand. I sat here, and you sat here longer than I did, working well into the evening with the applicant Wilmerite on seeker review and site plan review and details, and yet I had something I thought you had, which was an agreement that I've sent to Kelly. She has an electronic version, I'm gonna leave a version with her tonight, from Wilmerite that they offered to the village, annexed this project to the village, to ask the village to declare itself as lead agency, to connect to the village water supply, to pull the plug on the water sewer investments in 32, on those two tax parcels. By the way, there's a 34 acre site that seems to be important to the applicant, and I went through my copies of the DIS and RIS and asked Kelly. I'm hoping the 34 acres is part of some subdivision or lot line revision. We've talked at a 42 acres and eight acres, making a 50 acres of parcel. This is the first time that's clear the applicant is interested in this 34 acres of two lots, they're all described here. Is that part of your subdivision review, and do you really know what's going on? I mean, because if you're sitting here in this surreal environment, talking about how many angels can dance on the head of a pin, when the pin's being moved to another haystack, it seems to me a little silly. So it appears to me that it's within the province of the Board to get things straight. Whether or not you approve the project and what happens with the water, it's funny that on March 4th, in the Times Herald Record, there's a little Deer Park community somewhere up here in the Mid-Island that's got a water lawsuit. The private water transportation company, whatever cockamamie arrangements you plan to, the applicant wants to make, let the people down, and they didn't monitor the water, and they've gone bankrupt. Now, the bad news is there were people sick, they had to take it over, it's gone bankrupt. Maybe the good news, but not to the people who lived there that was under 50 lots. You're about to enable a project with 732 beds, real live people, and put a water treatment or water wells on another 34 acres, where's that? Who controls it? Town Board is talking in a recent letter dated March 4th about accepting this. This is a big deal, and I don't want you focusing on the 20% of the things, the 80% of the things that don't make a big difference, where the 20% of the things that could kill people. So I ask you to think carefully now as you get into this findings, and also the site plan and subdivision. And we need some maps, and I see the applicant has brought some, I don't expect them to cover this tonight, but there should be for the community some simple, clear maps to understand what this 34 acres is and what the risks are for town, depending on a private company as opposed to the municipal that all change now for water. So I think I ask you to think about the people of Deer Park, and I appreciate all that you're doing, but I'm worried.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else wish to make any comments in the public comment session? Okay. Moving along. We have no public hearings on it, we have application review. The first one up is Gate House, the accessory apartment. Have a seat. Tell us what you're planning on doing, some of it.
We're currently in contract on Gate House, eight Gate Houses, and we are hoping to have the ability to turn what they put on as an addition into a one-bedroom apartment.
Okay. Did we get a letter from the building inspector? Have you seen, you've seen it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Basically, what we're looking for, and what she's actually looking for, is more detailed site plan sketch outline, where you're gonna have the parking spaces, access to and from, what are the entrance stories, we don't know where that is.
Oh, okay, I had left that.
Turn it, yeah, the second page in there, the top, first paragraph, right on top.
Okay, so I do have the sketch of the site plan, but I didn't, I didn't draw in the walkway to, to the entrance, which is, that's a deck, side deck with a door that's already existing into, into the space that's highlighted. And this is, this is enough space for the free cars. I had provided a photograph, which is a gravelled driveway.
Yep. Well, okay. I guess on this sketch, I don't wanna mark it.
No, no, sure.
But just, you know, what that distance is.
What that distance is, it's not a problem.
And any lighting on the...
Yes, the other is. I had taken photographs. This is, this is that entrance, that's the deck, and there's a light at the door, and there's a light at the corner, which is right here. So that would be here and there. And that's, that's existing. I could draw in it.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to go around and ask the Board any, any questions. But I just, I, from both my aspect and from the building inspector's look, see, really just to get a diagram that, that marks some of that information out on the diagram for it, I just...
Not, not a problem, I can adjust that.
We have it in our package. Anybody with that?
Yeah.
No, yeah. So you can just measure out the parking spaces and include the...
Yeah, include the lighting.
The lighting.
The lighting.
Put a little dot or something. Where's this floodlight? Where does that shine to?
That shines, it's on this corner, it shines off the side of the house here.
So is that the one that's gonna supposedly provide lighting for this?
That would be, that would be the...
Or for this area?
That would be lighting of the pathway, not, there's no lighting currently at the driveway.
Right, but there's some lighting, you said.
Correct, at the door, which is...
Yeah. Yeah, that's okay.
Right, right at the top of the deck.
And you can kinda see them in this picture of the house.
Mm-hmm.
You can see the lighting.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, but in the bigger picture too, here, you can see where that lighting, you know, the entrance is in between the two buildings.
So orient me with that picture and this.
This little, this studio currently is this, and then there's a breezeway that connects the two, and that's what that negative space is in here.
So this is that?
Correct.
And this is that one?
Correct, yes. And this is, this is that breezeway. And this is, this is the cedar, currently a cedar deck.
Which is this representation of that?
Correct, yes.
Well, I think just, justification, just if you can mark this up a little bit, that detail.
Sure, I can mark it up on this, and, or would you like me to bring back copies?
Well, I went and, went and get a copy to the building inspector.
Okay.
So we can go through on it.
Does the applicant have Stacy's response?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so just...
We'll adjust accordingly.
Mark up the, yeah, great.
Do you have any issue with anything she's identified there? Are there any questions about what she's identified?
I don't think so. You recognize that she, you know, she believes you need a bigger septic field and tanking area, and that's good for you.
Yeah, we spoke to the Department of Health, and we were, we were fine with that. And we, we're aware that we have to meet all codes and CBO and...
Now, is that spooler spot finished or are they finished at this time?
Um, I would consider it, well, it's got a plywood subfloor that they've painted, and it has plumbing in there that they've put in there for her studio space, but the walls are sheet rocked.
So you know where the, how, call it, the kitchen area or in that bathroom facility or that?
Yes, yes, exactly. There is a bathroom, existing bathroom that does have a shower, toilet and a sink.
It's heated?
It is heated, yeah. It's, um...
And it was a artist studio, so it's actually plumbed with a sink into the studio already.
Yeah, some, with that, if you could provide a sketch of the layout of what the accessory apartment would look like, if you're all done, you got one?
Yeah.
There should be one in the package.
It should be.
We didn't have that one.
Yeah, okay, that's what I mean. We sometimes, we get, sometimes we know, one way or the other.
Basically, everything in this drawing is already existing, except for the parts that are highlighted. The existing sink is in this nook right here, which is not substantial for a kitchen, so that would be expanded onto this wall. This is a second entrance to another patio back here, and we would install the, the other utilities as far as the kitchen on this side of the sliding glass door. This is the ba, this is a library currently, but it's, it's what would be the bedroom, and then this is the existing bathroom. This is that deck with the two lights and the entrance here. There's a closet space. This is, the utilities for the house are here.
How big is the shop room?
At 1.1 acres.
Probably need that. Do we have a environmental assessment form filled out? Don't we need one filled out?
What is the impact, short form?
Yeah. And then I think just the other questions that Stacy had, if you can show them on the diagram, and if they're unclear, give her a call.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a mound system right now of the septic, your septic system, is it mounded? As a sub-symphysis, you can't see it.
I can't see it.
Okay.
They had recently just replaced the tank in 90, mid to late 90s.
It's been on the field.
Not the field, correct.
So that's what she says it needs to be, or the Health Department said it needs to be upgraded.
The tank needs to be...
No, just the tank, he said, judging by the size of the property, he wasn't that concerned.
Of the field.
Of the field.
He said that, he did want the tank upgraded from 720 to 12, 1250.
Yeah, basically, you're into a four bedroom.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Which is on as a four bedroom, but they must have had it obviously prior to the change.
Yeah, well, yeah, you're 1.1 acres and a 1.5 acres, so it's obviously, they were saying before, they don't even, that's why it's been there for a while, but, yeah, I think that if you could probably get that, we could probably, I just wanna get a comfort level, we could probably wrap it up next week, so...
Okay, great.
So we got that diagram, environmental assessment form, and some dimensions where the lights are on that document.
Sure, measurements to the...
And how much space you got, and, because that's, that's the only thing we'll have after you finish.
Yep.
The only thing we'll have a record of here is those sketches.
Okay.
To go forward with it, and if, say, you sell, somebody comes in or changes, now there's two parking spaces there, or seven.
Yeah, okay.
I wanna go back and see what's changed. So that's, that's kinda why we need them pretty well cleaned up. This is excellent, and I just think your other sketches.
The other sketch a little more detailed.
Get a little more detail.
Okay, great.
What we do is, we fill out a form, basically writing down the stuff that we're talking about. We sign it off, I sign it off, you sign it off.
Yeah, okay, I wasn't sure if I was on the zoning board favor. You guys aren't before the zoning board for a variance, are you?
No.
You're not before the zoning board, your, the letter says that applying for a variance, but no, that was just a mis, mis, misnomer.
Oh, I think the lawyer, it was basically, they wanted a letter, I think he wasn't sure what it was for, just to say that we...
But this is the only process, right? This is what you're doing, you're not going before anything else. Okay, I just read this in the...
Yeah, I think we would just, you know...
Just sign in the middle, and then I'll give you a copy of it, so just documentation of what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, we have that.
We didn't have it, it's a little patched, I looked, it was white.
It's starting to make me feel crazy.
Yeah, now, we're better on the paper. We can help you on that regular basis.
I just had that second beat, so I was like, who knows what happened.
Which is the entrance door lighting and the short form.
So can we give conditional approval, or shall we wait for those?
I just, yeah, we'll wait for weeks to get everything in, and then we can go straight through on that, because I have, gotta fill out the form and all that, so it's not any big of a problem on it, I'm seeing two weeks.
Okay.
All right, if you can get the stuff in...
Great.
Next week, so that we can have it in all right, and someone won't be up to me. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay. All right, let's talk.
Okay, I'm Charles Brown, the engineer for the applicant. We were here last month. Since then, we've reconfigured the septic systems, and we do have approval on those. In addition to that, based on our conversation with Dave and the Board, we've done some mitigation to the runoff from the additional purgusness and change in coverage on the lots that we're proposing. And we're doing it with infiltration trenches across the bottom of the, of the two lots.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna tell you what you... You brought it here, I wanted, just wanna use it.
This is 208, this is the entrance to the house. There's a subject that we'll break, and we'll discuss it later. There's a distance here and there. We would keep holding out, these private areas are based upon our conversations with the DOT, and they signed off on those, and so you can give them the permit fees that will give us the, the permits. The septic, we stretched them out a little bit, we just spread out the ladders, a lot of 20%, grade on the septic systems. And these right here are infiltration trenches, and they're downhill from all of our work. We'll run into those, someone will perp into the ground in a heavy rainfall, the thousands that will be strayed into that existing swell. The calculations we're done to show that we are reducing, actually reducing the runoff from the site now, in other words, after we build this and put in the trenches, the runoff will be the same or less than what's going through there now from our site. Much help.
So the ordinance requires it to be the same, at least the, the same amount, but do you have any idea what the reduction will be? They're required to keep everything on site, right, not increase it at all?
It actually doesn't apply to subdivisions that are this small. We voluntarily did it on this one.
Okay.
For subdivisions of this size, that ordinance doesn't take care of this town.
Right, but that there's an identified issue, so I guess my question, what, what additional percent do you think you've actually been able to reduce it to, and now that you've done the calculations?
One of them, I think, is probably about 15%. In other words, I'm scoring more, 50% more than, than the additional off, and the other one's probably about 10. I don't have the report with me.
And the soils can, can take the runoff where you have the infiltration?
Based upon the testing we did for the septic systems, yes.
Any comments with more numbers?
I mean, I guess, last time it just seemed like we were stuck in this place where it was just this intractable problem, and now it's just completely solved. That's cool.
That's what I was all about, I'm an engineer.
Yeah.
Been doing this a long time.
All right.
Actually, I got my 20-year anniversary coming up April 1st in business.
It's a classic engineer thing, those, right? And they, always the engineers say they can, you can pretty much design anything.
Well, it's a matter of course, but pretty much, yeah.
I hear it all the time. I'm not sure that's true, but I hear it all the time.
And you, I know last time you had concerns with the septic, but now you feel okay, or...
I looked at the new design, and I, I sent an email to the Health Department, I was trying to understand how it was approved with the new design. I had a call this afternoon from the Health Department, and they were trying to show me the pieces of the sanitary code that this would fall under. I had a couple of questions that I sent to them, they said that they were going to look at it again, but they thought this was going to pass. Said that they would get back to me and let me know exactly how this fit. I haven't seen that yet, but it sounds like it's going to get an approval, or it has gotten approval.
It has approval. And actually, on the other side of the Board, I have copies of the approved septic plans, I brought those with me, but we can leave those with the Board, because I, I ran copies of what they have, I have the visuals in my office. I just thought she'd wanna be septic, but if you wanna complete, copy of the approved septic, I don't have a problem providing those. Dave, he did, he did respond in writing to your email.
Yeah, I think I saw that.
So his... So his responses are the ones in green, just to comment some.
Yeah.
He sent it to you, we didn't send it to you though.
Really? Do you have a copy, do you need my address, I'll make sure you get, I'll cover it, copy and everything.
She only said she would get back to me.
Okay. Well, you can keep that copy, but I'll give you, I'll email you a copy.
No, I don't know, I feel like I saw it.
Okay, so we have, I think, enough information to schedule a public, couple of things.
Okay. I know that Hudson Design, uh, had put a letter at five pages of engineering concerns and I'm just wondering, I was surprised that this didn't, uh, address those in more detail. And I'm just, I'm curious, um.
Well, um, I mean, the concerns.
You've seen the letter, is that right?
Uh, did, yes, um, you know, the, um, the concerns that, that applied to this project, I mean, I, I, you know, understand the owner has a lot of concerns with respect to the drainage that is coming through this property. You know, I, I contemplated, you know, pulling the, for the records for, for the college and the, that entrance went in, but, um, you know, again, we're only doing two lots here, so that's a little out of our, uh, purview. Um, but as far as what did apply to this job, um, I'm pretty sure we took care of all of it.
Well, he noted that the.
A lot of it was the septic and, and again, we mitigated the drainage.
There was stuff like the EAF that, uh, the hits on the DEC site said this was an archaeologically sensitive area.
I checked that, I did see it.
I can check that if you'd like. You know, new EAF, you go through the website and you can see and you can do your own checks on.
Yeah.
He also said that there was a hit on, uh, threatened endangered habitat in the area, you know, check no on your EAF.
Yeah, I'll, you know, I'll check it again.
Good. The speedies for the stormwater permit, what's your disturbance?
For less than an acre.
He was disputing that, could you give me the, I mean, we're gonna need limits of disturbance.
I mean, for, for a speed spring to require it on a residential, it'd have to be five acres of disturbance, we're never even built that.
Small slip.
So.
It's a small slip for one acre or more.
Which is the sediment erosion control essentially.
Yeah, it's a small slip and this is an MS four, but it has to be approved by the town.
But it is, it is less than an acre, okay, verify.
We need the limits of disturbance on the plan, we also need trees located over, we would say inches or more on the site. There was some concern that this ditch is not handling what's coming to it. And I'm wondering if there's any improvements that need to be made. Uh, there's a claim that there's a lot of erosion that's going on in the ditch.
The existing ditch.
And, you know, that's part of the analysis, we need to know how much is coming down to see if the ditch might have to be expanded.
Dave, is that the ditch, uh, all the way to the left?
That's the ditch that runs down through the center of the.
Straight in the middle.
Straight in the middle.
It's just right here, there, there's the culvert and there's the ditch that runs through the property. You know, it, it, there's some large stones on it, I'm sure it's, you know, with the, uh, sand and stuff like that, it erodes, um. I, I can't say it's running regularly, but, um, I mean, again, that's a very, very difficult thing for me to do is analyze all the drainage coming through. I mean, unless there's the information available, well, I guess I could base, base upon it, assuming that the road doesn't top the, uh, slope and the size of the existing culvert.
You know, when the Orcott subdivision down below you happened, there was, uh, we got a drainage report that showed there was like fifteen acres coming to that and it was actually about seven going down to that end, there was a reason it looked like the Ice Palace down there.
But again, I mean, based upon the last meeting, group, uh, two oh eight has, has never topped, that was my understanding, it's meeting, it, it, water's never gone over two oh eight at this location.
There'd be a lot of water coming through that pipe, but not.
Well, yeah, I'd rather they could do a, you know, full blown drainage, drainage analysis of, of everything drained into it, I'd actually make the capacity of that pipe.
Look at the head on it, uh, at two oh eight.
Right.
Do that.
Sure.
Do that and see if there's anything in the ditch that needs to have to, that needs to be improved.
I think, because I'm sure my client would rather spend the money, you know, widen up the ditch if he had to rather than pay him either.
Correct, regarding to that, I want to make a comment after he's done.
Um, rather than pay him either, fortunate to do a extensive drainage analysis, so you're up to it.
Correct, well, as far as regarding fixing the drainage there, with due respect, I don't know how long you've been here, but that should be my problem. If you were here.
If, if it's eroding.
If that's been approved. That should have been taken care of by.
I'm sure she did. Okay.
But I'm, I don't think it's my responsibility.
If it's eroding, you want to make.
But it's not.
Well, just.
I mean, he's complaining something today, but he wasn't here fifteen years ago.
All right, moving on.
Is there any opportunity for the public to comment on this?
Not at this time. Okay, we'll be in a public hearing. I would really suggest, since this has been brought up, that you go through this letter and, and address these points to the best you can.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's an issue that's been brought out, we need to deal with it.
Okay.
And if we could get copies of that letter too, I don't know.
Yeah, she sent it, Kelly sent it.
Oh, I saw, all I saw was just a one quick thing, just the approval, but it wasn't what, it wasn't like a.
This was, uh.
Yeah. You attached that, the whole presentation.
Just the permit.
January twenty seventh.
January twenty seventh.
Yeah, just two sheets.
No, just the two sheets.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was right after, it was the day after our last meeting in January, as she packaged up everything that was sent.
Great memory.
I always sign things around meeting dates.
Oh, wait, I'll put, I'll put it over there. Oh, yeah, I see that, but not, no, this is, oh, yeah.
Oh, oh!
But I thought this was a response, okay, whatever.
That's the letter that, that Dave's talking about, okay?
Okay, 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 right.
I would just go through that.
Yeah.
Just, just our escrow, it's down there, it's equal to review quiz.
I can, you know, repeat all of these comments if you'd like, but I don't think you'd like that.
I don't think it's necessary, so, okay, thanks.
All right, so, um.
Yeah, 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 okay, now I remember, I thought this was on the health department, I was, I don't know.
The modest agreement is not, uh.
Well, it says, it's, we shall be provided stormwater is not according to specifications that we've done here, town superintendent.
Now, would we give that easement to the DOT since this is, two oh seven is their road?
You're talking about an easement through the property, make sure that that's.
Well, where existing swell is, right?
Over the swell, yes, over the ditch, so the.
So, and, and, then you wouldn't have to maintain it, that's interesting.
It wouldn't be the DOT though.
That's their road, their culvert.
No, the culvert, but we're talking about the swell through the property, that wouldn't be an easement to DOT.
Well, generally when a discharge comes from a DOT pipe, the DOT gets the easement.
Regardless of who gets the easement, it's not, uh, it's the opportunity with it, it's not the application.
Okay.
They need to get in there at some point, they have an easement to get in, they have access.
Okay, yeah, but I have a problem with that.
We're just gonna figure out who.
Um, I.
Who are both?
Yeah, I guess.
Then you'd want that shown on the map then, Dave, or whatever, and what's the width you'd want, twenty feet?
Twenty foot.
Twenty foot, okay. And so then it's just good to let whoever ends up being the purchaser of those properties know not to put anything near there so that if.
Can we grant that easement to both the town and the DOT?
Yeah.
I mean, but it's just an easement.
Part of the subdivision.
You can offer it to both the town.
Okay, I'll talk to the permitting engineer.
Consider for that, no challenge.
I guess the water actually comes from the college, huh?
Well, you said it's seventy acres worth of watershed area there, right, you said that from the old report?
Yeah.
On that, on that pipe?
Not on that pipe, well, through that area that's going down the city ridge.
Okay.
Included with some of that watershed was just down on the city ridge.
Is it accessible to the owners? Twenty feet to the V N to provide point access?
It, it would be actually difficult to get in there from two oh eight, um, I'd probably have to, you know, figure a way to provide an easement off of it, uh, for driveway and I would do it between the wall right there too. So, um, I'll take a look at, I'll make, you know, I wouldn't dread an easement, I wouldn't put an easement on the map and nobody's getting there.
You'd have a guardrail in front of it, yeah.
Well, we're breaking the guardrail for the driveway.
Right, but the easement would be this way, it'd be like this, then it lines up with your, still with your guardrail.
Right, I would have, I'd have to somehow dogleg it along two oh eight so that there's a way to get to it, understood? Unless, you know, the jointing property or the property owner back wants to, you know, pull an easement through there too and come in that way, but I'm sure you don't want to do that, right? We'll figure out how to get to it.
Okay, Dave, anything else?
Curious about, have you looked, uh, across the property line toward wetlands on the neighbor's property there?
Down the hill? Yeah, there, there, quite a bit back, a couple hundred feet back and, uh, there was some federal wells back there.
Okay, nothing closer, nothing more than a hundred feet of them?
I can, uh, you know, what I, if you want, and then, uh, most towns don't want attachments to the EAF, but I, you know, because there's a question about the danger speeches and, and the, uh, whatever else, I, I will provide all the, uh, backup with the EAF, uh, including the, the wetlands.
If we can go from there, see what, what these questions are. Just right there.
Okay, so we'll get this all addressed and come back, uh, before we can get to the public hearing then.
Yeah, I think that's, there's a number of, so I think we're gonna go to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hold on, and, uh.
Give Dave time to look at the email responses, too.
Okay, January, ditch needs to be planted, drainage needs to be managed. Yep. Okay. Right in the middle.
Somebody could try one.
Tell me about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. So we haven't figured over here.
She did. It couldn't register, yeah, yeah. Maybe some places, right, you know, that's, and I'll make it work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, traffic property we left over.
Uh, before I run gone, um. I attended a town board meeting and somehow a solar, zoning ordinance was, uh, discussed and handed to us to take a look at. Um, I just want you to take a look, I'll put it back on the agenda for the, um, twenty eighth, I wanted to tell you, um, about it. We did do a conceptual, uh, here on a applicant who's looking at installing a sizable, twenty megawatt solar farm, um, in town. When you get up to twenty meg, that's, that's commercial, kind of trying to, uh, transmission system, um. It's, um.
Can you say or no, not wrong?
I really don't think, but it wouldn't be, yeah, um, but we don't have anything for that.
Mm-hmm.
Where should we cite it, where are some of the locations, some of the limitations, um, George had a, one from Taiwan, and I don't believe the sun ever shines up there, I don't know why they adapt it up there, but anyhow, um, take a look at it, I mean, it's, it's real, I mean, people are looking at that, where do we think it makes sense? Um, and what are some of the implications and ramifications and let's kick it around as a discussion. Uh, anyway, now we're not looking for the, the rooftops, the megawatt or the, uh, uh, we're looking at larger units that take up, you know, acres of, of property, uh, putting that. I always thought the flood plain was a great spot, uh, because it really isn't a heck of a lot you can do, um, if they're up high enough, it'd be okay, but that's. I just want you to take a look at it, Lloyd's asked us to take a look and, and propose some language on it, so next week, next meeting, we'll put a little time in to discuss, discuss that.
Now, is you totally allowed to buy that amount of solar? Different application of the percentage of solar?
Um, no, they don't have to buy it, they, there's a wholesale electric market that I'm somewhat familiar with.
Oh, and they can use it.
They can celebrate it on the market. And, uh, so they, they'll write up and down the price, you can contract with them, uh, for, it's, uh, there's a number of different things for it, but one of the things is when you get to that size, you really have to tie into the, I'll call it the high voltage system, which is on the towers that run through town. Actually, hopefully on the freeway, so, you have to get there, you won't get down the street. But anyway, take a look, let's talk about it, um, and, um, I think it's, you know, like I said, we had an application, we talked about it, we looked at zoning code, we had absolutely no way of putting one of those in.
Just fit into light industry or?
Well, that's what it is, where would you sign them, good going. You know, and again, you're looking at acreage, you're looking, you know, this isn't going to be on a five acre site, this is going to be, you know, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, they're bigs.
Wow.
Yeah, so anyway, Nick Reed, let's talk it over, let's try to get the kinks out of our understanding on it. Let's move from there, but that's, that's the reason why you, you all got it. Um, the other thing I got, and, uh, Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the school board is declaring itself lead agency and looking at modifications of buildings, the school buildings. We were, uh, noted as an interested party, um, on it and we received the, um, the notice of lead agency by, by the school, but, um, George, our role in school activities?
You are an interested agency, not an involved agency, there is no permitting that takes place because it is controlled by the state. So you can review and comment, you can draw attention to issues that you believe are appropriate considering site planning or other impacts of the project, but, uh, you don't get to say yay or nay.
So as, as the progress, projects develop, what, we'll get notified of them, um, and, you know, what I'll bring up each time is, is it, does the board want to discuss it, does the board have comments on it, we want to respond to it. But we're an interested agency, we don't have any approval process on it. But I did get that, so I just wanted to keep you informed, I gave it to you, so, that's the only other thing I had. Okay? Okay. Okay, um, continue our discussion on the finding statement. We did talk about, um, the other sections and finish up on those, but the areas I wanted to talk about were D, E, L, O, K, N, and R.
What's our thinking in terms of, so we're going to continue with some of these like stormwater and visual impact sections before we do community, or?
No, I hope to get to community today, too. My goal is to get through as much as we can today because I'd really like to send George off to put it all together so we can read it as a complete document with the modifications that we've all suggested on it. So, you know, obviously you can put it all together, we, you know, if we don't get to a section, we'll have a hole or something to that effect, and we still have to modify, but the idea was as much as we can because I think, um, you have to read it from cover to cover.
I agree.
Just to get the consistency across in some of the sections.
Well, I think the other sections will be faster.
These remaining sections are pretty quick, yeah.
Yeah.
Stormwater is the one with the most comments, the other remaining sections are pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So between, uh, Dave and George, we can wander through on section D as a beginning.
Surface water.
Surface water. Start following things out of, I haven't even started yet.
While I'm paging through, looking for my copy, um, perhaps we could get some illumination on the nature of the, uh, water easement that's proposed, was raised before, and I think...
That's not a question.
There's a thirty-four, as I understand it, there is a thirty-four acre easement that's being proposed for the water supply system.
Yeah.
On the jam property to the east, and I'm not sure we've seen the map, but it might be helpful for the system, the water's understanding of, uh, the water supply system.
See how long the battery goes.
To show where that is.
George, is that, is that thirty-four acre, is it kind of just looked at differently in terms of the discussion regarding the potential annexation if the village were to be involved in water or sewer? Is that why it's framed differently, um, in terms of a discussion with the village compared to how we've been looking at it so far?
The annexation, well, annexation, if it were to take place, would divest this board of responsibility for approval of the project. You don't believe you would be acting as lead agency in that case. The town board would have a role, has to approve the annexation. It's a, frankly, this situation, I've not encountered before, where you go through an entire review process and then plan B arrives and it's...
I think that, that partially answers what I was asking, but...
But there's two parts. The other part is, uh, the applicant has also, I believe, proposed that the village provided water supply without the annexation, which to, as far as I know, is inconsistent with the village's law, which requires annexation if, if an applicant or a property owner seeks a water supply from the village. So in order, in order for the village to be in compliance with its contract with New York City, which provides the water during a significant portion of the year, and their, the water users either have to be in the village, village residents or property owners, or they have to be in a proved town district. And there is no permanent town district serve that property. So it's unclear to me exactly how good you're that process could be.
I, I, I understand there's some nuances in terms of which, which path may eventually be pursued, um, but my question has to do with the idea that it's framed in terms of a thirty-four acre parcel. I, it makes sense that we're, we're highlighting that particular parcel if we're thinking about annexation, but why was it not, I mean, we, we've definitely discussed this parcel, but we haven't referred to it as a thirty-four acre parcel previously. We've just discussed it as the area to the east of the property where the, where the test wells occurred and where the water would be sourced, like, is there a difference?
They said thirty-four acres was only, as far as I'm aware, recently calculated or determined. The idea initially was that there would be wells, the wells would be dedicated to first the applicant and then it would be an offer of dedication to the town with appropriate easements to allow access to the well sites. The applicant has, I believe, concluded that thirty-four acres, an easement over thirty-four acres would make sense.
Yeah, okay, I can explain a little bit, I, we, uh, you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the plans we submitted, and we haven't changed them yet because I don't think they're physically decided, just shows easements that go over the water lines themselves. Uh, those easements run up to the top of the hill where you have the sewage plant and the well, and the tank and so on. Um, there was discussion that...
You said sewer treatment plant?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was like, why, did you move it? It's the meeting, wow, good job.
I don't want to give anybody a heart attack.
Okay.
So, and then with this design, there's wellhead protection areas in a two hundred foot radius. So, once you put those on here, we were looking at it in conjunction with the property owner, Mike Corriello, and the thought there is since we want those wellhead protection areas to be protected, that the easement itself ought to go over, go over and include that, so. So that thirty-four acres comes, comes about as a line that would be drawn down like this. So at this point, it's not a, it's not a parcel, it's an easement still. We haven't shown it to Dave or anyone else, because it's still...
Like, if we're looking at it through the town lens, it would be an easement, it would most likely end up just being an easement, but if it were to go via the village, it would probably have to be a parcel that's annexed.
No, it's not the village.
There's no rule, I mean, we're not even, there, there is no village conversation. So, if, the proposal in front of you is the only proposal we have on the table.
So... Been what you're on? The, there's a proposal that has been provided to the village, or the station.
As far as I'm aware, there's been no further conversations about that.
But it's not been what you're on.
But it's out there, that's the, yeah. So it's two proposals out, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I'm not here to touch on that or discuss that. Well, I have no information on that. All, really, we're here in front of you to talk about the project we've been talking about for four years or so. Uh, the thirty-four acres, why it's thirty-four acres, it, we started drilling wells, I guess, two summers ago? Actually, I forget, I think it was.
I remember.
But if we would have found enough water in one well, then we would have had to drill one backup well. If those two wells were two hundred feet apart each, because you have to draw that two hundred foot circle around it, then that would have been, how many acres would have been a part of that protected area? We ended up drawing, drilling like six or seven wells or something, which, once you draw all those circles, it turns out to be thirty-four acres.
Okay.
We haven't got any great sections sent us.
Don't worry.
I don't know if you didn't watch us two or not. I know that you said you're...
Well, we wanted you to actually sit there and be quiet, how's that, huh?
All right, well, we could do that too.
All right. Came back to surface water. Did you find a section yet?
No. What happened to one day last week?
George is doing it.
You know, I got real, real warm fuzzy with my consultants, don't bring the documents that we need to review with them. Okay.
Well, here's my thing with the surface water. I don't know that there's a better model, probably maybe people sitting here can advise me better, but I feel like with global warming and with hundred-year precipitation events happening, seems to me every year, is that still a model that makes sense? With this, the SWIP is designed to avoid any increase in discharge from the hundred-year precipitation event, and therefore, site drainage from the site is not anticipated to have any impact on drainage structures or drainage systems immediately downstream of the site. Seems to me that in a changing climate, that statement is a little bit, uh...
Regressive.
Yeah, yeah, something. I'm not sure how to, what can be done to mitigate it more. I mean, I know a hundred years sounds really long, but am I crazy or are we having these hundred-year storms all the time? It seems to me that every year is a huge, big thing, and it's just going to keep happening, and, you know, we've got to start somewhere, planning for...
I guess the question is, everybody knows quote unquote, at least from, you know, years, I, the hundred year, what to expect on a hundred year, but, um, I'm not sure if, you know, if you said, okay, why don't we do a two hundred year? Is that...
Yeah, that's, I mean, is there such a thing, or we don't have two hundred years worth of storm data?
The EPA model and the DEC model all realize it's got that hundred-year piece, is it's looking at protecting the stream banks when there's the big storm, along with the obvious flooding with the rain. This project deals with more than the hundred-year storm, and I, I don't have the SWIP here to tell you how much more, but it does, it has more than a hundred-year storm capacity for the rate, and it goes over that.
So we can qualify those things?
It's beyond the hundred year.
I don't think it actually, it doesn't seem like it says that. I think it says, like I'm looking here, proposed mitigation, D one.
Tell me where you're at, oh, you, oh, no, you put them all together, right?
I put them all together, I have no numbers to help you.
Page two, line twenty-seven.
Because the question that I came up with, so with the current number of buildings proposed, we're anticipating maintaining the rate of discharge at existing levels. With the same stormwater system, and, like, this was my question, with the same stormwater system, and if we had half the buildings, you know, just as an exercise to understand, um, how much would we be, would we be decreasing the rate of discharge? Like, so if we created this more robust system, and we had half the amount of impervious surface, are we reducing the amount of discharge?
You're going to have the same, the same rate that the hundred-year storm, but if you've got less impervious surface, there's less going in, you're going to have less volume.
Yeah, there's two things, we have, there's a volume number and a rate number.
For smaller facilities also, if you had less impervious, less, you wouldn't design it for ten buildings if you were only going to build two.
Sure, but I think you...
That's not a thing, you can't like over-design it just to be safe.
It's been over-designed somewhat.
Yeah.
But, I mean, in our notes, but in our notes, it, it just says that it's, it's going to maintain the rate of discharge. It doesn't actually imply that it's...
The standard it has to keep is to maintain the rate. This system actually does a little better than that.
Well, okay, but it does not say that at all in our finding statement.
Probably should.
Yeah, so that's what we're saying. Also, just a little typo on page two, line ten, just there's a sentence fragment right there, site, site.
Which one?
Um, line ten.
Line ten. I, I took out...
Page what?
Two.
Page two.
Page two. Yeah, right.
I just changed sites and I put in which have, portions of the site which have limited soil mobility. Okay.
So, Dave, yeah, I had a question about where D four is, about the, um, these are wet basins? Are we designing wet basins? Because why would they be dredged? Are they landscape basins now? And do we actually still dredge them, or why can't they be landscape bases?
Yeah, that's a question I have.
Dredging is to remove sediment.
Right, but, yeah, but...
Sediment will accumulate every five years or so, and you take sediment out. You basically take it out when it reaches fifty percent of the volume.
So when you're restoring it with plants again? I mean, I guess, so I actually didn't realize that they actually dig it back out again. I guess I thought there'd be some nutrient uptake that you had, it's so it's really not getting particulate matter, it's more getting nutrients, and then the plants, then it's sediment.
It's actually sediment that goes in, and it's going to decrease quite a bit over time after the site has really stabilized with vegetation, sediment's going to decrease quite a bit. It'll be longer periods between, clean it out. You always have to clean it out at the end of the job, so it's a good fresh start.
Right, but it's not planted until after the job is done, because there's no point in planting it, right? So then you get everything all collected, then you remove it, then you plant it. And then what's the timeframe when everything gets removed again? Because then it becomes its own little habitat, you know? So I'm just wondering if there's a different way to collect sediment that's not in the basin?
There's pre-treatment that goes on too, in the basin, in the basin, so those are meant to really be cleaned.
Mm-hmm.
The, the stormwater basin itself, cleaning on that would be a long time.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, I, I don't remember even seeing them clean. That's why, when I read that, I was kind of like, okay, but you're saying that there's almost like a basin before the, the vegetated basin?
There's pre-treatment that's required before the...
Yeah, okay.
It's the order of course.
But then, should something be put in so that if it is dredged, the bio remediation plantings will be restored?
This, the SWIP calls for maintenance, with a series of actions that have to be taken in periods for that typically to be done with it. So the SWIP itself will provide that information.
Okay, and it will, because I, you know, I've noticed with great interest that there is plans for bio remediation and improved swale management and things like that. Um, they are presented as mitigations for other things, and they should, there should be mechanisms to make sure that, that they are maintained.
Or the SWIP has all the maintenance in that, and there's an agreement that that has to be taken care of to actually put in the, the D on properties. You have to show that there's serious commitment to maintain. It's part of the sign-off on the notice of termination for the speeding.
And, and when was the SWIP last updated, Dave? Just curious, what would you think of what's the current date on that?
Was it December?
The SWIP, the REPA carry?
Just like the regula, the regulations.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Oh.
How old are the regulations?
Ten was the last update.
Okay, twenty-ten?
Every, every five years.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something from like nineteen ninety.
Whose regulations are these, these SWIP regulations?
CPA is part of the Clean Water Act that this came out of, and it's the DEC that's the administrator.
So for a project like this, who, so is it the DEC who's monitoring the site and...
Plus, plus the MS, the new faults will become or is an MS four. That means it has power to, the obligation to monitor and approve SWIP plans, implements, and modifications. So in some respects, it acts in DEC shoes.
It's a process during construction that, there's inspections that are required every seven days, and then in a very heavy, heavy rain, those inspections have to happen. Uh, there's a, a log on the site that's available to the DEC that shows every time that the inspection was made, and there's notes on those inspections on what...
But I'm more concerned about the ongoing dredging that's required, like if there's dredging that's required five years later, ten years later, who's monitoring that, who's enforcing that, who's paying for that work?
The commitment by the owner to do that is part of the speeding.
So you'd still need the town to review the site and make sure that those things are being done?
Yes.
And so that's a, that's a responsibility...
As part of the MS four, the town needs to do that. That's part of their, one of their six measures that they have to meet. It's part of the stormwater management program with the MS four for the town.
So the town is actually acquiring additional responsibilities that it will have to pay for?
Yes.
And should the, should the owner fail to do the proper maintenance, would the town be obligated to do so at its own expense?
I think it's an enforcement measure.
Yeah, it would, in the first instance, it would be enforcement. Let me see if I can extract this one. The EPA allows DEC, the DEC to issue a general permit for stormwater discharge from construction activities. There is a SWIP and a variety of things which happen in the course of that progress. Once construction is complete, the applicant then has the opportunity to relieve itself of that regulatory obligation by filing a notice of termination. In order to do that, there are four steps they have to go through to provide for maintenance actu- permanent maintenance of the stormwater features that are on the plan and the town signs off on that. Once that's done, they're no longer covered by the general permit, but they are covered by that maintenance schedule. It can be enforced through the site plan process and it can be enforced by the building department. And what I presume the town will wind up doing is charging a fee, just like they do for fire inspections.
Per annual inspection.
Okay, that's my, that's my question.
You'll have something similar for the MS four responsibilities they have to discharge.
I'm just very concerned about adding responsibilities to our building department or additional expenses that the town has to endure. What?
Charge a fee for.
But it's not even that. It's the, you know, it's, it's the ongoing maintenance and keeping track, the additional work, right?
And at some point, you know, it comes up to the level where there's gonna be enough of these, the town will maybe have to hire a part-time or a full-time inspector.
Okay.
So the full-time, the full-time inspector in terms of monitoring the program during construction, I know I missed the last meeting, did that get brought up? In terms of that, besides, again, I think it's just too much on the building department, you know, to, to monitor everything.
Well, Stacy will be the judge, but she, there is provision, I think we did talk about it. There is a developer's agreement, the example I showed was from Stop &amp; Shop. It does provide for an inspection escrow and the building department makes suitable arrangements. Either Stacy monitors, you know, you hire an engineer.
Retain somebody to do that.
There's a variety of ways to do it, but she has the means and ability.
Okay, because I think some of the language, I think the comment that I had sent back was to not tie it right to the building inspector because while this building inspector happens to be excellent, the next building inspector may not be. And like, we're kind of relying on, we all say, oh, the building inspector, well, it's Stacy. But that's, I, I've seen this term, another town. And I guess my concern would be to tie it to a person as opposed to have a, have a procedure and have a mechanism that it's not a one-person decision as that goes.
Well, I think I talked about was converting references to building inspector to designated town representative so that the town board, in consultation with planning board, with anyone else.
That's better, yep.
With that intention.
Okay, I didn't mean to digress, but yeah, but since you, the door opened, I thought I'd throw my foot in it. Yeah, okay.
I only have one comment on page two and I just want to, it comes up a few times. We talked about light-colored roofs, we talked about white roofs, we talked about energy-saving white roof.
Do you know what they call them? Yeah.
And I know years ago, former life on the planning board, we talked about earth-tone roofs, such that when you're looking at from the ridgeline, it's greens or the browns or what have you, the earth-tone. Is there a spirit here or are we going around in circles or we have...
This isn't on D, this is on, on the visuals?
Well, no, we got it, we got it picked up on any further mitig- on line eighteen. It may be further mitigated by the use of light-colored roofs to reduce the thermal loading.
Thermal loading.
And then we flip on, on, when I get to another one, I'm gonna get to blend in. We talked about white roofs as...
The white is a generic term, no? It doesn't have to actually be white. They're called white and now they'll be...
My mistake is there is a white roof program. The intent of it is to reduce thermal buildup by allowing the roof to reflect.
Heat, yeah.
And I, my presumption is if rainwater runs off a white roof, it's cooler than, than water running off a black.
And actually, the recent, the recent things are a white roof, unless you're in a, like, a very urban, an urban area, a white roof is actually more effective than a green roof in terms of temperature and they're getting like a climate and temperature control. So for big-picture things, white roof is actually better and I think it was just a recent EPA, I think it was an EPA study, so...
I just want to get consistent on it. I just, I bring it up because we have it in a couple of different plots and...
I have used earth tones, but that was where there was visual significance, visual view shed.
It's just, it's a lighter, these are pitched roofs, so it would be a lighter, you know, whatever they're using as a, as a shingle.
Okay, I just want to use the same kind of terminology.
Right.
Yes, have you come up with that?
Well, white roofs, I don't think we had any intention of using white, that's what she was, light, but not white.
Right, it, everybody says it's a white roof, but the white roof means it's a roof that has a different reflector as opposed to an absorption, so it's a light quality that's not absorbing energy for heat and it's a climate change, you know.
Well, it also affects your own air conditioning costs. We, we actually had a black roof that we painted silver and it made a huge difference in our individual house and nobody's complained about it.
It puts a soul to it.
But Mike, I mean, I, I think the, the light gray roof seems like it makes the most sense based on, from my understanding of what's more efficient. But was your question having to do with view sheds? So if you're on the ridge and you're looking at the town, is that what you were asking about?
Well, when we had, like I said, when we used to look at view sheds from the roof, from, from the ridgeline, Hickory Ridge was an example on that. One of the things we put in is the roof, roofs had to be earth-tone to blend in so they didn't, being outstanding, you know, there's a pink roof or a black. And I just, here, it, you know, I saw the terminology, the white roof, that's, I think it explains that one on it. We've had light-colored roofs. I just want to get something consistent on it. Again, this is one of those things that shows up in different sections on it and you want to be consistent going across on it. So what we're looking really at is, is energy-efficient, light-colored roofs.
Is it not an albido? Is that not the term they use? Are you familiar with that? I think that's the term for a white roof. And it's about heat-reducing roof. So it doesn't, when you say white, everybody, you just said, we're not gonna do a white roof because it's not this. It means more of a generic, it's being used, it's being used interchangeably with more of environmental.
High heat is what, is what it's called.
Is there a specification or a typical, something we can refer to as roof of this type?
Well, the, the word is albido, I'm almost certain. And I think there's probably a color range in that.
I think you want to call it high albido.
Yeah, I don't know the hundred percent the answer, but I'm gonna guess, George, there is. So, and it's probably in the lead stuff, they probably give you the specs, you know, I'm gonna guess. I'll look it up if you want. I'm pretty sure that's the term, though, and I think we use that term, I think we're better off maybe. So there's no confusion. I think it's albido. Lynn, right? Is that, sound, doesn't that ring with you?
Right, I mean, they talk about planet Earth, albido.
So, I always get...
Frozen ice on the Arctic Sea, the problems with having less snow to reflect the sun's heat.
Yeah.
Albido is a measure of reflectance.
Yeah, that's right. So that's the, I'm pretty sure that's the term.
And for the purposes, though, of the consistency of this application, should we decide that it's more important to consider the effect on the heat of the runoff and the energy efficiency and things like that over perhaps the, what you might see from the ridge or what you might see from the road in terms of visual?
No, I, I, I'm good with, I'm good with the explanation because we do pick it up sometimes.
I don't think it's gonna be, they're gonna match it with a shingle that's gonna match their building typically. I mean, that's, you know, so they're not gonna be doing something that looks like that. And to then specify something that's dark that might, you know, I mean, I think maybe that's tail wagging the dog a little bit.
No, but I think, I think Lynn's asking a good question. It's just like, you know, which are we putting a priority on and I think it makes sense from a board perspective.
Actually, the visual impact didn't say anything about the color.
Both, I mean, visual impact is important and we're hoping that it's an aesthetic.
But, no, but her question from the ridge, though.
This one, you know, where this is...
The building is gonna be the, okay, so here's the roof, it's gonna be like this, right? So you're gonna see that, but meanwhile, there's something sticking up like that. So what's, why do, I mean, I'm not sure that this is really what we're gonna care about when there's, like, like the woodland pond.
But I guess you would, you would just...
You see that from the ridge, like, nobody's looking at the roof, you see the whole complex.
Right, I mean, but just take it a step further. I mean, if we were, if we're focused on visual impact, which we have a section for, then we would be talking about the roof and the, and the entire structure. So all I'm trying to do is just respond to Lynn's question, like, which one are we focused on? And I, I think as a board, we can, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with going towards the, the more energy-efficient, light-colored roof as opposed to being concerned with how the, the project looks from the ridge. I mean, sure, you look at, you look at woodland pond and it's white, but so what?
You see the whole thing. But I think, George, let me ask you this. So when we're doing the site plan review, I mean, are we not reviewing potentially a color palette?
Yes, we've seen it.
So, I mean, so we're gonna be reviewing the architect, so that ends up, because we have competing interests hypothetically, right? One is a visual and then you can say, it looks great, but environmentally, that's a dog, you know? So by, by managing that with like, the, we're gonna be doing like a, I'm gonna call it architectural review. Not quite, but we're gonna be looking at the architecture and what it looks like from an aesthetic point of view so that we're looking at that and then we're also considering, because you have to take all, you can't take one of them by themselves, I don't think. Because when you ask, you know, which one are we doing? Both, you know, because the visual is important. From the, from wherever, it's important. So how do you balance that? And we have, that's our job.
Well, you're not really doing both. You're, at the end of the day, you choose one or the other.
No, you don't. You look at them all, you, it's competing. One might, one might come up a little bit more, but you're not gonna say, well, it's energy-efficient, it looks like hell and we threw out the art because, but that's the best thing to do and that's what we're gonna, no. I think you try to, you try to mitigate it all to the best that you can do. That's the whole point.
But I mean, if we're actually mentioning light-colored roofs in our findings, we can't just throw that out in site plan.
But I don't, I don't think we are throwing it out, so that's what I'm saying. I think we're looking at, we're looking at the package.
What that language does is preserve the option for you to consider that as you go forward. It says you may, it may be mitigated. It doesn't say it shall be mitigated. I'm not aware that that's...
I mean, that's not clear to you, huh?
Right. I just, I don't think it is. I mean, some of the, I brought up the ridgeline on it, but in essence, you probably won't see these from the ridgeline because the tree line, the tree line is gonna block some of that that's higher.
Or wasn't it, wasn't it Al Wagner's, was he the guy who did that, that piece about, you know, people seem to be concerned about what things look like from the ridge? But it's probably more important to be concerned about what the ridge looks like from town.
Yeah.
Right? I'd rather err on, on the latter.
Well, on the long view, so to speak, because we know we're gonna be looking at something built from the ridge, yeah.
It just showed up a number of times. That's what kind of discussion I wanted to get from the board. Thanks.
All right, well, that was easy. Move on to the next one.
Can we go back to the section D and finish that one up?
Is that done with this one?
Yeah, that was, that was the same.
Was that in D, your question about white roofs?
No, mine was in actually in anticipated impacts.
In D, Mike, though, right?
In D, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, yes, what do you got?
It's the second paragraph up from Proposed Mitigation, the last sentence.
I, maybe this is more for my own edification, but in D2, where we're talking about drainage basins have been designed to maintain water flows to the wetlands. The basins will discharge cooler waters to the wetlands, reducing thermal impacts. So the, are we saying something along the lines of the waters would be cooler versus having no basins? Because, right, if, I mean, if we had no basins, then, then the, the water that's on a, a blacktop surface would flow into the wetlands and that would be warmer water. So the idea is that the basins kind of cool it down to a more natural temperature if there wasn't that warm, impervious surface. So like, if there was no development there at all, the temperature would be X and if the basins are there, the temperature would be X. That's, that's kind of the goal?
There's also bioretention that puts it into a filter and into the ground and it actually cools it before it gets to the basin. I mean, there's other measures in there that...
They're cool.
So would, could you potentially say that the water temperature would be even cooler because of the bioretention and the basins than if there was no development there at all?
Yes.
Okay.
The depth of the water too in the basin, it's pretty cooled down at the bottom compared to what it is right on the surface.
Okay. Anything else on the...
No, I'm sure.
Oh, it just wording on D7. It says, as a mitigation, the applicant has offered to provide enhanced buffer plantings, but that doesn't mean they will. Shouldn't the wording say the applicant will provide enhanced buffer plantings that will be used to encourage blah, blah, blah? You can offer to do anything.
We should accept it, right? Okay.
But are they shown on the landscape?
Yeah, they're on the plan, so...
So if the landscape plan incorporates enhanced plantings.
That, that dovetails a little bit with a question that I had from section F in terms of, you know, how much detail do we want? It, in section F, I forget what that was even about, but it was something about the thirty-two acres will have preserved, enhanced, or restored areas with native plants. And, you know, how, how much planting is taking place and what are these native plants? And are there two or are there several or...
I think that's things we figure out in site plan.
Wasn't that what we did with Spider, though? Wasn't that, part of that was discussed, I think, with Spider? And he had made some recommendations. I thought when we heard the landscape architect and Spider kind of come in and talk, I thought they had talked about what species of plants, where there'd be removal of plants. So I think, I thought, that's what I thought.
I know, but I just, I...
I was here for that, but, you know.
In a finding statement, you would do it in a generic sense, but what native plants you're looking at and how many and where they are located would be on a, on a site plan. Every tree, every bush, every, and, and what the names of those plants are would be on a site plan.
But that's like trees and bushes. These are more like just plants to enhance the, the basins.
I mean, how else can you...
But that's a part of a landscaping plan. They actually detail the size, the quantity, the species, all of that on a plan. Yeah, it's everything.
That's significant because one of the notes will say that the plantings must be maintained in private condition so that they're replaced if they die or...
Yeah, I mean, we probably take them, do we take a maintenance bond?
There typically would be two-year...
For like a two-year period and then you just release it when they've taken hold or we go through it and say, twenty trees have died and they're gonna be replaced and, you know, and release the bond up to that.
Well, that would be the step rate after planting, but the maintenance note means is... it's got to be kept that way going forward as long as the site's being used.
I mean, I feel like I've been like through this review of the finding statement. I mean, those kind of broad statements are what I continue to have trouble with. And I think we've fixed some of them as opposed to just saying like, there will be plantings with native species, like just some, you know, recognition of how much or what plants or what document are we referring to as opposed to just this thing reading like a, like a glossy brochure. That's, that's all I'm asking for.
So should we, as per the discussion with Spider? I mean, because that's really where we got it. I mean, that reference it back to, I think he wrote up a document. I think he talked about that. And I think that was the conversation was with the wetlands expert that they went out. And so if you want to tie it to something, that was my recollection too. You know, so if that, that makes you feel, because then it's.
The other general way, the other general way you could proceed is to say, the site plan will show appropriate quantities and types of vegetation and buffer.
But that's in our site plan ordinance anyway, right? I mean, the ordinance requires you to show the size, the size, the number, the.
Right, but for the purpose. So it's to buffer it from, from the impact of adjoining reserved parking. Whatever your criteria is, then during site plan review between Spider, the applicant's engineer, and you, you'll determine whether that level is appropriate. So it sets that mechanism in place. It's actually operationalized. And of course, on the plan review, when the plan has to show these things, where they're going to be, what quantities and so forth. And that's going to be the thing that will persist over time. The finding statement is relatively loose in those respects. But the site plan itself controls and is the document that would be the enforcement tool if something does not persist.
Yeah, this is one of the rabbit hole. How many plans, what do you start specifying? And I think one of the ways you specify is you can cite the landscaping plan that lays out that. I mean, we do cite sometimes some of the diagrams and exhibits in here. And that's where we get more detailed information on that. But I think we had something to fix that up a little bit there.
So Stacy counts every plant too on those site plans. They're there.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on D?
I did have one other thing, or at least two.
So the wastewater treatment plant emergency generator is closer to the apartment house, correct, than, than the, than Park Point housing, probably?
Yes.
Right? So to the extent that, you know, you know, that when they exercise it, because they have to do that generally weekly, correct, I think, on a, on a generator? So they should do it during normal business hours or have a time set up for that? And it probably should be on the Park Point side versus the backside to the extent we can do that, you know?
The site we call the wastewater treatment plant is in between the generator and the apartments. I mean, the building is buffering the noise.
Okay, so, okay, that's, okay.
Generator, wastewater treatment.
Yeah. You think that's common sense, but it's not that common. They, sometimes somebody has it set and it's going off in the middle of the night. And, well, I have a couple flood plain communities. And so that's ended up being a big deal. Yeah, it's ended up being a big deal.
The second to last paragraph before number four, proposed mitigation, the last line of that second to last paragraph says, such impacts have been mitigated by the reduced parking areas. I think this would be more accurate if it said mitigated by land banked parking areas. Because if we were really mitigating, then there would never be the option of having parking in those areas. Because as it stands now, land bank parking leaves that, that option open.
Okay.
Outdoor land bank. It's not good.
Because, you know, the mitigation has less teeth because we're only land banking parking. The mitigation have, would have teeth if we were, you know, if, for instance, the applicant was pursuing a variance to have less parking, which we've discussed before, which I would be in favor of.
Is there, George, is there, I'll just, is there a way that at some point in time, without going for variance, say five years down the road, that we don't need that parking? Do they have to still come back for variance even though it's land banked? Can't we say that it's been determined that it's not necessary and, or we have to drag them back in for variance when we've actually kind of all determined that maybe that parking isn't necessary? We banked it, but say we've realized that everything's built out, something else has changed in the world. They're not using, we're using smaller cars or we're using something else. But no, the only, only way, I mean, is can we put in our findings that based on, you know, a historical review of, or whatever the site, after five years, if it's not necessary, that they can, it could be re-vegetated or it could be.
It can be.
Not used, it doesn't have to be parking anymore.
Well, it needs to be pres, right now, it just needs to be preserved. So the options there to provide parking on the site. So if they never disturbed it at all now?
No, I'm saying that we, we assume that they may need it. Okay. But five years down the road, we realize, you know, you really don't need it. Can then we go back to like the enhancement on the buffers? On a couple of the buffers, they were a little bit tighter because of the land bank parking. So could then we take back 10 feet and have them not? Is there a mechanism other than going for variance to, when we've realized that the results are?
Well, there's two things you're talking about. One is saying you don't need it anymore. And the other is say, do something to it, which is an affirmative action.
Right, an affirmative action so that you kind of mitigate.
You can leave it as, it doesn't really matter if it's land bank parking they don't need or if it's removed. What your concern is doing the mitigation or doing that enhancement.
Yeah.
And that could be a condition that after five years, if you don't use it, just do it. Because if you haven't used it in five years, what do you take it away?
Well, that's, I'm saying, will that, will that require, because now they're parking, they don't even have a land bank anymore. Will that now require variance?
Well, if they, 10 years, if in 10 years they decide they do need it and they go through the process and they demonstrate it's necessary and it's approved to be built, whether or not the mitigation is there, it still needs to be built.
No, I understand that. I'm looking at for a different, I'm looking at the reverse of that. I'm with, I've always been with the idea we need less parking. So, and the less we have, the less it'll be used. And that's my, so, so I'm looking at a way we can get out of even the land bank parking, but without making them go for variance.
Well, the thing of it is, if it's, if it's grass that we've got covering these land bank spots now.
Yeah, grass is maintained.
Everything else on it, what more enhancement do we could use or would use or would change? I mean, if there was an area there that we, the grass wasn't, we needed something better, we could take a look at it. But right now, there are grass buffers around most of them anywhere.
I think the applicant has said that they, they intend to use it as like unpacking parking area. So like when, you know, kids come in, they're going to, you know, use it and that makes sense. They're, they're going to park on the grass to unpack their cars. And that's a perfectly fine use for it. But most of the time, it's not going to be used for cars. So it could continue to be used for that reason. But it would be great to say, we're never going to have impervious surface on those sections. I think that's where Eileen was headed.
Yeah.
It's ultimately up to the board. There's a mechanism, I'm not sure who the, if it's the building inspector or the planning board. If someone has to determine, it is necessary to pay. If you determine it's not, I mean, if you never get to that point, or if you determine it's not been shown that it should be paid, it won't be paid.
Right. We had put, one of the statements, I forget which section it was, you had said that it was up to the building department. And I know one of the things that I would like to not just be the building, that it was actually, if, if there was being a determination made, that it come back to the board also. She could alert the board and then we, we discuss it.
Oh, that's a good improvement. Yes.
We talked about like the simplified plan review where she.
Something, yeah.
Say, okay, I have to.
She's saying, she has, you know, she comes up and says, you know what? I think they need more parking. Okay, let's look at it, you know? But that it's not a single decision.
Yeah, we were going to come up with.
I changed that one of the things you sent.
Let's look at it, but here's what, here's what you have to show before I start looking at. You have an overcrowding condition. You have a, a number of different things that say, I need it. And then in that also plan, this is where the first 25 spots would go for the additional parking. So it's kind of a procedural thing that the board could then say, okay, they followed all the steps and they need that and mark it off to that stage. So I think we get that. But, okay, anything else on D? I'm going to go to E.
Well, I do have a question on, you know, this, this D 12. The applicant will petition the town board to form a backup sewer district for the wastewater treatment. You know, this talks about this, this optionality that the town has based on our town master plan. And I know that the applicant just commented and said that they don't anticipate doing anything different from creating a wastewater treatment plant at this location. But the idea of having, you know, the village as an option, I think, you know, being mindful of New Paltz more broadly, I think a case can definitely be made for the applicant using the existing structures that exist with the village. And, and, you know, I think based on, you know, the recent correspondence between the applicant and the town and the village, it seems like, you know, that is a mitigation, like that we would, like, I don't actually believe that there's much to be gained by having this optionality of a sewage treatment plant with additional capacity. I think there's more to be gained by having an applicant actually strengthen our existing infrastructures.
If possible. And that's where we've run into, yeah, we can go, from a finding statement, we can only go so far. We can't make the village do something or say, yeah, it would be a better idea.
We're in control of that.
The village sewer treatment facility, even though it's under a consent order and.
Well, I'm just looking at it using the broader Seeker framework, you know, what is in the best interest of our community.
EDC won't allow a hookup this big right now to the village. I mean, there's a lot of work that has to be done. The village has to do before they can lift that consent order. So I'm, you know, how can you?
But if that, if that work were to take place, wouldn't that in the end benefit the village of New Paltz? Because it would have an improved, enhanced sewage infrastructure.
I mean, if they, they, instead of building the plant, they put it into the village. Yeah, yeah, well, that's.
Yeah, the same resources.
But we don't have control of that, though. That's the whole point.
Well, we don't actually have control, but I mean, you know, looking at this thing through Seeker, looking at these mitigations, it seems like that would be something that we would comment on.
There is a variety of things. What is, the applicant has proposed an action considering for two and a half years, which did not contemplate enhancing the village sewer system. And the applicant has made a proposal. There is a.
The applicant has what?
The applicant has submitted a proposal now.
Yeah.
That substantially changes the nature of the proposed action, at least with respect to order and so forth. So whether the applicant chooses to proceed with that or not is something that we, the thing that I've been trying to evaluate is the extent to which this is a significant modification of a project that could go into question whether a supplemental EIS is required. Because if the village were to allow this to happen, they'd have to go through Seeker too, to determine whether all of this activity and modification and the things that need to be done to the plan may have an impact. You can't, although they are under consent orders, maybe there is an option for them to forego Seeker review.
Right. I mean, can't they, in a way, just kind of refer to the work that this board has already done and kind of?
Well, no, because this is, we've done an evaluation. If the applicant has done an environmental impact statement based on use of this proposed plan outside of the village system, this would require determining if the connection can be made, what the potential impact could be of connecting to a system that's under consent order. A court is required to provide the additional capacity needed to provide service to this, potential for impacts that might result from that. So there is, it's not just saying, okay, that's another option, because it's a significant change in the, in the project. The sewer plant would no longer be down at the south there. The sewer would have to get tubes to the sewer plant somehow. There is, the applicant originally proposed that, that would have been studied in the EIS. Would not have just been, they're going to use the village plant, no problem. So it wasn't studied. And I think whoever becomes the agency that reviews that has to look and see if there are impacts and whether those, whether either a separate EIS or a supplemental EIS for this project is required. So it's not, it's not a linear process.
Can I just say something? My, my view of that discussion that was had at the village, although I was not there, not present for it, and I was not present for any of the agreement which the draft agreement supposedly got submitted, I think clearly those are type two under Seeker. I don't think they have any Seeker effect at all. They're clearly preliminary. There is no application for it. There isn't any intent to follow through that I've seen on it. And I think that they're type two under Seeker. That's not part of the plan that's before this board. I don't, I don't see them as classified as anything other than type two.
It's part of this action. And type two by itself would be separate.
All right. I think, to respond, I think it would be a great idea if the village's sewer treatment plant was able to handle it and everything else. But it wasn't something we studied. It wasn't something that I know what the impacts would be to comment on it. And I tell you the truth, I don't know if it was a better, would be a better idea or not, because basically we have no information on what that would cost, what kind of impacts it would have. So I'm kind of leery of saying from a global point of view, it'd be better if they went to the village. Flip side of that, in addition to that, this has been raised and turned down numerous times. So I didn't even know if it was a viable alternative to even comment on it. And that's, that's where I was coming from on D.
He threw us that on here a few months ago. That, and that discussion was had by someone who wasn't familiar with any of the issue.
Okay. All right. I want to move on to groundwater. If you got some wording that might be helpful for you to send it off to George, and we can take a look at it, the global one. I'd like some of the water. Groundwater. You guys have that section?
Yes, we do. We're over to it. We're ready to go. We're ready to go.
The only I put in, the only comments I really had was anticipated impacts, um... I thought one of the, um... Mitigation of impervious surfaces was somewhat of a clustering that we could have thrown in there. I mean, um, groundwater, impervious surfaces, cluster, you have less impervious surfaces.
That's mitigation, though, that's not anticipated impact, that's a mitigation measure, so.
Okay.
Um, I have a question about the perched water condition. So perched groundwater conditions observed on the course, that might have minor impacts on that. I mean, impacts could be on, you know, changing water course, right? I mean, if you're doing, even if you have perched water, so, you know, to the extent that it may affect the stream on the site, the wetlands, I mean, what's the, what is the condition with this perched water condition?
It's perched, it's going to drain out and be gone.
It's, right, but once, once that perched, it's perched, it's like on a table, it could get cracked and then it goes someplace else, right? So, but if we're talking about impacts, anytime you change a water condition on a piece of property, then whatever the accepting stream nearby could be impacted. Because groundwater and surface water are somewhat related in terms of when, we don't know which direction they flow.
It's just gonna be clean water.
No, understood, no, I mean, I'm just in terms of, we're looking at this and I'm, I'm-
Quantity wise, it's not gonna be great. It's going to kind of drain itself over time and then it won't be there. But it's, you know, it's good surface water, it becomes-
No, it's clean, understand, we're looking at anticipated impacts, there's a stream on the property, right? So once you start moving soil around, you're breaking whatever conditions are on site that may, that may affect stream flow? That's what I've been told.
If it's perched, it won't.
Okay.
If it's, you know, a continued seep, there could be some very small base blow that's involved, but I don't think we've seen any of that in any of the testing that's done out there.
That's the only anticipated impact, I was talking about a perch, but I know that's, any groundwater is usually related to any surface water body, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and, you know, that's a potential impact.
I just want to call the board's attention to this points, lines thirty-six through forty-three on page one. There was concern about whether there would be arsenic or other pesticides in the groundwater and the testing was done and it did not exceed D.C.'s, or supply standard.
Okay, any other questions on E?
I did have a question, it was, talking about well pump testing has confirmed that groundwater wells will not have, did not adversely affect other existing wells that they were testing. But is there any provision for, say, three years from now? Some of the other wells in the neighborhood do show an impact from continuous use. As, you know, a well test is only for a day or whatever. What do we know about the rate of charge? What do we know about how long we can keep pumping?
There was a hundred-and-eighty-day drought condition model that they went through to try to predict that there would be water, if you couldn't leave it under drought condition, you would not quite less than what was needed.
But that's not assuming that there will be development on other land in this watershed or, you know, uh... The, the town comprehensive plan likes the idea of developing the land between South Puck and Thirty-Two. Eventually, there will be more pervious surface there. I don't know where the water in the water table comes from, but could that conceivably have an effect? What other new wells will be built? Is, you know, um, maybe we're getting into a little bit too much imponderables and maybe that's-
If you look, if you look at condition- If you look at condition E-five, the applicant is applying for a water withdrawal permit from D.C. D.C. has changed its permit program, but, and water supply permit, which was the previous version that had to be obtained in order to produce water for, for public water supply, had a general condition that, uh, if there was an impact upon existing wells, the permitting had to make accommodation of the effective property of providing water through its system. So that, between the village system, which serves the area to the, to the north, and the area served by this, um, right now, the existing homes, I think, can be accommodated by that condition. The question, you know, basically New York State uses it as a, uh, find the water, if you have an existing well and somebody digs a well next year and goes deeper, draws up your order, the basic response is to, oh, your well is bigger and get your order back.
Yeah, I thought I wrote-
So Georgia, you're saying this E-five covers it?
So the E-five answers my question about before.
Yes, that is my expectation. It's a new regulatory scheme, but the past scheme had that condition in place.
So that's, it's clear enough that, that, you know, that it'll actually tie, something will be tied in then, based on that? That's the assumption.
Clear enough that D.C. should provide that.
To D.C., okay, okay.
Just like to say that the pump tests that were done on these wells, it was amazing how little drawdown there was. Seemed like the wells were really put in separate fractures out there because there was no-
Was it different watersheds or, yeah, we don't know.
No, they were, they were relatively close together, and that's why we expected to see some real drawdown, but there wasn't. Looks like they get-
Two different independent systems, yeah.
Fractures, several fractures that are not connected. Interesting stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on groundwater?
Groundwater's crazy.
Okay. I'm gonna go to L and get visual resources. I think in both spots, we talked about lighting. One says, uh, six months after we go into business, and the other one says, in the wintertime, we probably put them in December, it'd be better.
Give me the line reference.
I'm on, uh, L, line fifty. Between six months after completion of each phase of construction, does any town repose tools, using soil lighting to determine whether it's consistent? And in another spot, we say, in the wintertime, and I haven't found another spot yet. Oh, here it is. Where's that one?
On page three, line forty-four, L seven.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So should we, should we just say, uh, December or January or something like that?
We add a Christmas time. Yeah, I have all the Christmas lights up in here.
If you went back to line twenty-seven, where the site plan includes a general landscaping plan, I, I think that needs, it's a detailed landscaping plan, is what we were just discussing before. And then it kind of, kind of details some of the, what we have discussed regarding spiders input as well as the other person. So I don't think we should, I mean, to me, it shouldn't be a general landscaping plan. It's gonna be fairly, it's line twenty-seven towards the, page, page one, sorry.
Here's, yeah, there's some, like, there's incorrect statement. Line twenty, it says, the project will maintain a hundred-foot white buffer along its boundaries, including Route thirty-two. The buffers are required in the RV zone up against state residential property. So it's just against the, uh, Joe, Joe's property.
Property across the street, President. Property along Thirty-Two, it's residential, so, R-one. It's not, it says RV, it says residential zoning district.
The other side of it. So it's a seventy-five, except that there's no buffer required. Not contiguous with the RV zone, it's on the other side of it.
Well, the zoning line is, but the zoning line is, but separates RV. You want to add, or, or my fault?
R-one runs along Route Thirty-Two, I think, going down that, on the eastern side.
So RV extends across-
RV and RV, no, RV does not go across, RV runs only on the western side of Thirty-Two. All the way up until Allen's property.
RV is definitely on the west side.
Yeah.
So RV, but once you cross the RV line, you know?
When you cross the RV line, you would be south of Belatera, that goes back to R-one.
On the west side.
Yeah.
On the east side.
On the east side, it's R-one all the way up.
All the way up.
All the way to Thirty-Two.
So it's a hundred-foot setback from the line, where is line?
If Thirty-Two, if D.C., There's seventy-five foot separate, and there's landscaping over it. But there's not much, but this says maintaining vegetation, there isn't any vegetation.
May want to look at what the code requires. May want to look at what the code requires.
Yeah, we're providing with current birds, in front of the birds. With vegetation on, I mean, there's vegetation in there.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
I have a question about, on page three, um, mitigation help screen. Uh, but the building height, um, it says in the middle of the paragraph, in the course of considering the variance requested by the applicant, as well as during final site plan review, the ZVA and the planning board will consider opportunities to take further advantage of the topography and landscaping to reduce the apparent building heights. Does that mean possibly actually changing the placement of buildings? What, what does that mean?
It means you can look at the site plan with the, uh, the grading plan and the site plan elements may combine to give you an opportunity, may not, probably won't. Seems to be a fairly clean grading plan, fairly... If there's a place where you can see that it could be reduced to a couple of feet, it's possible. It just means that you're gonna take one pass through with the complete plan to look and see if there is an opportunity to further reduce it. I think probably landscaping will be more helpful in that respect.
Yeah, you don't want to regrade the site. Everything changes.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting you regrade the site in the way it's going down the foot, but there may be a place where-
But it wouldn't mean, you know, pushing some of the buildings farther downhill or anything like that?
No, I don't think that was, that was not my suggestion.
Okay, 'cause, you know, when taking advantage of topography, there's some places on that site where you couldn't see a building, but that's where the trees are. At any rate, I'm just wondering what that meant and if it, well, I guess it doesn't.
That's a loose term.
On L four, I'm just asking Mike if we actually found the design incorporates the architectural features found in the community, and that it's gonna blend with the signs? Did we actually make that, have a discussion that we agree with that?
That's a good point, no.
Yeah, yes, it's got quite an inventory as a community, hereabouts community, so.
But I'm, I'm wondering, I'm not sure that it matches up with what the design is, so I was wondering if we actually had made that finding that, or, that we agree with that, that statement in L four. I just, I don't remember discussing that, you know.
I thought that was still something that was going to be discussed.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, so it's still on the table, so, yeah, so I don't know that we're there with that, yeah.
So if it's still on the table, then you wouldn't have L four, right?
Yeah, incorporating, you know, existing architectural features could be-
I think we should say similar to what we said on the other one, that we're gonna minimize or we're gonna, to make it incorporate that, you know, similar to the one-
During site plan review, you're gonna review the architectural design to ensure-
Yeah, the design will incorporate some of the architectural features and will blend with the surroundings and with the intent to preserve and, you know.
But, you know, the crossroads, the initial plan is, was designed to match the existing surrounding architecture of the ugly malls. And, you know, we looked at it and said, it matches, but we don't like that. So, you know, just matching isn't necessarily a feature.
Those are architectural features, gatehouses and stone houses.
You don't necessarily want to match some of the buildings on campus.
I'm guessing it's gonna be all old stone, you know, three-hundred-year-old stone houses, if we're going.
Okay, anything, anything else on visual?
Oh, that was a bomb.
I'm way down, but I want to keep going, um... I'm gonna go to N. What is noise? We're gonna get some K. Because if I go to K, we'll never get there.
I have nothing on N.
Noise and odors, I think we see.
Yeah, that's it, we're free.
Probably one.
No comments.
Well, I had one little question, on page one, line forty-seven and following, it talks about the noise levels from those activities that the Moreyello residence should be similar to existing noise levels from traffic on Route Thirty-Two and activities on St. Louis Campus. But is noise from different, if an additional very similar noise is put around a sensitive receptor, does that add to the overall noise level, or does it just blend in?
It's not the noise, it's not, it doesn't add.
It doesn't add. It doesn't add, it's just, oh, yeah, okay, I hear that there, and and with regard to using a berm to block noise, I understand they work quite well, I've seen it happening all the time, but do berms themselves pose stormwater and erosion problems? Um, is, is that, do they present other issues, or, or are they essentially benign and they have no real effect on, on runoff?
Stormwaters are used in the calculations of the storm. Berms, slopes on berms, whatever part of the calculation.
In design, to accommodate.
So they've already been designed to accommodate that.
You know, you know, the berm does the noise. There are other aspects that the berm is going in for besides mitigation noise.
Right, they're going to hold some of the toxic soil and, you know, be visual blocks as well, so, okay.
That's a, that causes me to ask, but it's an interesting question, if the hill slows down and you build a berm, is a berm pontico? As it runs down the slope, there is now a berm, is there a tendency for?
This is great, it's sort of, I go, I get the product of the berm. Ratings, take care of, first place.
They would have probably put a rail through it or something, that would cut it then, you know, they would have it. It's a slip air or something, yeah, yeah. So I have a question about, um, line forty where it talks about enforcement of anti-idling restrictions. Are there anti-idling restrictions in town? Because I've never seen that happen.
There are actually anti-idling restrictions in state law. I don't remember the authority, but it's the Clean Air Act requirement.
Does the town have its own code relative to that? Okay. That's, that we might want to consider, just because the town doesn't comply with that.
Oh, the town doesn't.
The town vehicles don't comply with that, so I think, that's why I'm saying, so if we're asking this, and I think anti-idling is a great thing, and it's a great savings other than for police cars or emergency vehicles that have to, you know, have to be transmitted, but other than that, so, you know, we should have an anti-idling, but I just don't know that we do, that's what I'm saying, if we have it at the federal.
Is it about town, town vehicles?
Yeah.
They should just be told to stop that.
I suggested that, but, what's that?
And they will obey, of course.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I just say they're idling, so I just think that it'd be great to, you know, talk to the town council about adopting some local, um.
It does, it doesn't prohibit idling, I think it's fifteen minutes, can't exceed.
Yeah, that's crazy, though. Okay, so I'll just give you one little quick scenario, um, Frito Lay went up and did a, had an inspection of their, so they're doing some solar and they're doing some natural gas vehicles and things, they have a chart as that they, every single one of their drivers, they have, they have it, um, GPS in their trucks, they know where they go, they, if they're in traffic, they are required to turn off, and they have, they have the chart so detailed of how much savings they've done, but just watching the driver shutting off their vehicles when they're in traffic, where they're going, if it's more than a, a two-minute, a minute, they're required to turn their thing off, and they have the metrics across their walls as you walk in there. It's, it's quite impressive.
You mean when they stop somewhere to deliver?
Stop, to deliver, even in traffic, even in traffic, they, they tell them to stop, they're, they turn their vehicle off if there's a traffic jam, they turn it off, but they actually have quantified all of the numbers and they give guys, you know, they said they, they can tell the GPS where they're going and who's going to have the traffic, you know, because you're going over the George Washington Bridge, but it's actually really impressive and, and, you know, you don't need the trucks generally idling anymore like they used to.
I could not call the enforcement officer to go down to Frito Lay and then pick up their truck.
It's, it's really impressive, but.
The highway superintendent should be.
They should just, Susan Summitt was there and she saw it too, it was, it was really impressive, so I think it would be a good thing for the town to do, anyway.
Okay. Um, the only I have is on the next page is that backup generator is required for the waste water treatment facility, so it's not a we kind of put in required. I think we, actually we did talk a little bit about it, I mean, I just want, for, for keeping our wits about us, I'd like to get the K and.
It's twelve pages long, okay.
Yeah. What I'm going to, what I'm going to do, George has got to go, um, uh, to a higher calling. So, we're going to try and walk through, highlight what areas we have questions, talk about them, and, and I'll do the markups and, um, and get together with George and see if we can get that fixed up, so I can put the whole document together, but I'd like to walk through to get your input on K. As sketchy as it may be, or as detailed as it may be, um, so we can at least, um, have something different when we come back in two weeks.
I liked K. I'm slipping out with that.
And I'm much more, uh, methodical, I'll go, uh, wander through, um, slowly through it, so, but, um. Yeah, okay. Tell me where you are, because George sent out a revised one on the twentieth, that's sixteen pages long, so.
Oh. I've got this, I thought it, oh, okay, I thought I printed this today, but I guess not, this is one twenty-four.
Yeah, you printed the old one.
Wait, that's where.
Okay.
You don't mind?
No. Okay. We'll take it, we'll take it a page at a time. Well, I'll put it this way, rather than. We're still looking at our notes, so we're going to go to page each time with the first one who has a comment on the page.
I'm pretty good with K.
Okay, I, you know, it's.
I mean, it's not exactly my area of expertise, but, uh, yeah.
Well, if nobody has anything before the, uh, the, the new, um, paragraph, let's see, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, lines twenty-one to twenty-six.
What, what, what section?
First page.
The first page.
First page.
Page one, um, um, it says, it is assumed, it assumes the, the coming, um,
Yeah.
Report assumes that the project will not increase overall student enrollment at the SUNY New Pauls campus, blah, 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 and we're all, you know, we've been told that, but, you know, the, the traffic findings include a review provision if that assumption turns out to be, um, not correct. And so if we're inserting this assumption in the community services findings, it should have a similar, uh, review provision to make changes if that assumption is not correct.
Can we talk about that, but I would put that down as, you know, do an increase enrollment and get it, something.
Can you, I, can you say that again, I didn't exactly understand.
Well, the, the, it interested me to find that in the analysis and the findings of the traffic, uh, impacts, uh, it was explicitly said that the traffic analysis depended on three assumptions, one of which was that there would be no increase in the student body, and that down the line, if it shows after a certain number of years, that in fact the three assumptions are not correct, that the conditions are actually different, then a review of the traffic mitigations and provisions would be done to decide if different, um, mechanisms could be employed.
Yeah.
So that, that is how that mitigation of the traffic was dealt with. So here we have an explicit acknowledgement that there is an assumption that the project will not increase overall student enrollment, it's one of the same assumptions that was one of the three in the traffic thing. And so if, if it's even calling out assumptions in the findings, could that also be linked to a review provision in the, uh,
Yeah, the services, yeah, yeah.
In the possibility that this, the, the assumption is not accurate.
Well, well, I'll get with George, we'll get a paragraph in there to take that, that note motion forward.
Because, you know, if we really looked at it hard, there are quite a few different assumptions that we, we haven't necessarily ferreted out, although some we have, and, um.
And I think, again, this, this may not only be in community services, George doesn't, has not done the introduction, um, piece yet, and some of that that we've hit on numerous times is student enrollment. It's, you know, one of the basis of going on the study, so it may be in the introduction, but we can bring it up here, um, definitely on that. Okay.
Line fifty-nine, SUNY New Pauls Police Department cannot, cannot provide police services to the project except in certain emergency circumstances. What, what are they? And at one point in time, there was also a discussion that they could respond to adjacent, uh, properties to adjacent, uh, adjacent to the college.
But I, I thought that's the way it works, though, the, the SUNY police, like, let's say there was like a horrible incident downtown, and the New Pauls police needed assistance, then SUNY police would, would, would show up if they, if they had to.
We've heard it both ways, though.
No, but I, I, I think we've all seen it, though, you know, you've seen SUNY police downtown because there's like some, some crazy event going on, like a giant bar fight, and the SUNY police show up and they are involved, and then I, I think there are laws where they can and can't do certain things, but they are there to assist in, in some capacity.
But then down on sixty-nine, it says that President of SUNY PD cannot respond to police calls in the downtown business district.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, huh.
Well, not, but, but, well, that, I think that's the thing, it's like they can't respond to calls, they're not the primary responder, but I think if they are asked to assist, I mean, that should probably, maybe we can just clarify that language.
We can clarify that.
Because from my understanding of how the, the local police and the SUNY police work, that that is how it works, it's, you see SUNY police assisting.
If, if it is a police call, the police
Everybody shows up.
Responds, and police need assistance, they can call on SUNY.
But I think you need a clarification on certain emergency circumstances.
Yeah, it needs to be, I think, Tom.
I've got no data to say that, to explain what those certains are.
It's got to be just fleshed out a little bit.
Yep. Okay. We'll take a look at both sentences and try to get them, so that, uh, confusing.
Uh, line ninety-four, in addition, SUNY policy requires emergency services to be called when students report medical events or the, these are fire calls. That shouldn't even be in there.
Yeah, because that's nothing to do with it.
Because the project's not coming under SUNY scrutiny.
We'll take a look at that, um, I think what we're trying to do is differentiate medical events, fire calls at Park Point versus medical events and fire calls on campus. Because.
The dormitory.
The dormitory requires low schools to the fire department. What the applicant said is they have security on, and if it's a, yeah, they'll be first responder on.
I think we're going to need to look into that.
All right.
Is, is the implication there that, um, the SUNY policy might actually extend to Park Point?
Yeah.
Because they are SUNY students?
No.
Yeah.
But I, I think Tom, Tom's right, and the way you're phrasing that question is exactly on point, Lynn, that it, it's, it's not clear the way it currently is, it just.
Yeah.
It's like, why would SUNY policy
Why, why does it matter?
Um, be involved in, in what's going on at Park Point?
No, there's nothing, I, I think it's just a differentiation, but we'll, but, I got it circled, and, um.
Yeah, I, I just think it should not be.
I think it's just the SUNY policy requires to call out a fire department.
No, why, there's not, shouldn't be anything involving SUNY policy on a, on a private project.
Right.
And looking at the number of calls that are made to housing developments, housing projects, if it happens on SUNY campus, is it, it's a requirement, it's a requirement that they call the medical services or they require, they call the fire department. If it happens at Park Point, it isn't necessarily a requirement that they first call the fire department or medical services. I think they have security or some, there's some differentiation that just.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, we're going to get to that, because that's not right either.
But they have people on there that check that out before the call you make.
Who does?
Park Point.
Or is the point of this paragraph, they're talking about just a, an increase in demand on emergency services? Right, so they're just referencing the fact that SUNY policy requires emergency services to show up, so that's just.
It shows that it's another level of, of response.
I think that's why that's in there.
Of course, the sentence, yeah.
Yeah. Well, try, I, I would say if we got this much confusion on what it is, we need to rewrite it, to say what we really want to say, and we'll get back to that, so, let's take a shot at that one, okay? All right. Moving on down.
Just the grammar of the sentence that starts at line one oh one. I can't figure that out there.
You're looking for the period?
The anticipated direct needs that warrant additional staffing include the anticipated increase in residential traffic in the village network and on Route two ninety-nine during peak hours as analyzed in the traffic impact study, but increased traffic during non-peak hours, such as late evenings and early mornings, increased need. Oh, increase, that's a verb, okay, I thought increased.
Well, anything that's, anything that's two, four, five lines longer, and has so many, uh, sections, we could parse a little bit better.
Yeah, I thought they were talking about an increased need, not a verb.
It's George's that sometimes we have to go, why?
And you can't find what the subject is, much less what the verb is, anyway. Okay. We're going to page three.
So is this fourteen percent figure at the bottom of page three, the project will increase the number of college-age residents in the town by fourteen percent, is that with like a hundred percent in, um?
That's like seven hundred students on, the assumption that there's about forty-nine hundred students living in the town and village and campus.
I mean, that's assuming that the project is a I mean, that's assuming that the project is 100% filled.
Yeah, we're working off the 696 beds.
No, but I think the applicant, at least in the Camoin Report, has always used numbers like 90 or 95%, not 100% occupancy. I don't know if it makes a difference in something like this, but...
It's just, you know, I don't know, 4,900's exact number, you know, so it's ballpark.
Like, if you study 100%, study worst case, we always anticipate some vacancy because we need to for all of the...
I think that makes perfect sense.
I don't like the language in 115. I guess we develop a bit of testimony equals observations of the planning board members. That's, you know, that doesn't sound like legitimate language. I mean, it's people's experiences. I don't, it sounds like, so like, oh, I happened to drive by and I see this and I made a jump, a huge leap and said this is this, you know? I just don't like that. I think that's really weak.
Yeah, it seems kind of weird.
Yeah.
Maybe the public, because that's what it said, public hearings.
I mean, that's, well, we've heard that, we've all felt that, we've seen it, we've been there. It's not like I drove by and said, oh, here you go.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like a casual...
Since we've been reviewing this, that has nothing, that's like common knowledge.
Okay. Anything else on page three? If I, you know, and again, if we go over it and you didn't get to comment in on it, Senator George, if you get it later on. Hey, I went back and I looked at it and I meant to say something on such and such a page.
And there's a tiny typo, line 156, spend should be spent, I think?
Oh, spend, it should be spent, too.
Bill check won't get that.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on page four.
I mean, if we're going to grammar, are we starting sentences with that? But no, yeah, I guess we are. Okay.
I always hope there's an English major on a committee that I sit on because I'm terrible at that. When I became an engineer.
Problem is, this is all written in the law.
Somebody would get in there and say, okay.
There's a lot of typos that are very minor and I just don't feel like it's worth bringing up.
I know. Okay, the only comment I had towards the bottom was there are some paid, Rescue Squad has paid. And the sentence doesn't really allude to that. You know, fire department, or from all existing all volunteer service.
So instead of all voluntary, you could say mostly.
Well, yeah, we qualify it one way or the other. He does pick it up later, but I just wanted to clear up that sentence. Can I go to page, page five? Okay, before you get to mitigation, you know, you can make a comment, then we'll talk about mitigation, all right? You had something on 240, Tom?
No, I'm on the mitigation end.
Okay. What we put in there is a couple of alternatives. The first one is while, and then there are a couple of terms. We're looking for the language that we're comfortable with going forward. It's hard really to see if you had any, any one or the other.
Would it be useful to actually state in the findings what the proposed payment of the pilot that they've applied for would be?
Well, it's changing.
Or is this something that it remains to be decided?
It's still up in the air. There's a proposal on the table from the applicant, but that's exactly what it is, is a proposal based on their calculation and their assumptions, which really are not the ones I would use, but that's the debate that's going on now.
So we don't know.
We finalize, no, there's a meeting tomorrow with the applicant and...
Although we do know what has been proposed, we don't know what will be decided.
Right.
Would it be useful to put in what was proposed?
It might be a moving target. We can quantify it, it may not be rounded off, it may not be settled by the time we want to issue that because obviously everything hinges on the finding statement for the IDA, for the town, yeah.
But if our findings are that it's not enough, what is not enough?
Well, that's what...
It's all, I mean, it's really laid out right here. I mean, I think in words rather than numbers.
The line, yeah, the line that I was hanging on, 258, while the applicant proposed a payment of a pilot and according to the Tulsa County IDA UTEP, the planning board finds that the payment is inadequate to mitigate the anticipated impacts of the project.
Yeah, I mean, that pretty much sums it up.
Yeah, and that says, it doesn't preclude anything else being solved, but if you just take it by the letter of the law and how the town gets 22% of the tax revenue that's associated, or the pilot that's associated with it, that the town won't recover its increase in costs from a straight UTEP calculation of a pilot. Whether you do, you know, 696 beds, 232 beds per units, whether you do $450, whether you do $750, when you multiply them any which way you want and multiply that by 22%, that the town won't recover its costs. That's all that says. It says, if you do it by the bulk, we're not gonna cover costs. And so that...
Yeah, so the exact numbers aren't even helpful right now.
On 247, that whole paragraph, I think that needs to be redone a little bit, where it says, "The adequacy of the staffing level and the training required will be initially determined by the applicant and reviewed by the chief of police and the chief of the fire department."
That's weird.
Yeah, especially when you go down two more sentences and it says, "And minimize the impact of town, emergency services acting as first responders." I don't think they want to really leave themselves out for the liability of that issue as a first responder.
I think what we're trying to say on that is that the town, fire department, and police department will know and have procedures that onsite security will be using, and they're in agreement with that, whatever that may be.
Oh, I think it should be a joint effort between the applicant and the chief and the...
I think it is. I think what, I mean, to me, I read that as they're gonna come up with a plan, like somebody starts, he's gonna come up with some plan, they're gonna meet with the police chief, and they're gonna meet the fire chief, and then they're gonna hash out what the plan really is, but to get that, they're responsible for the first draft.
Okay.
That's how I read it. I don't know if anybody else reads it like...
If that's what it's intended, that's fine.
I don't know what it's intended, but that's how I read it.
And further on, Tom, there is an annual meeting that's required, and includes the fire, and includes the police and emergency services, who say, is everything working the way we expected it to, and should we be changing that? That's a requirement to go forward on the project.
Because they have everybody, everybody's in on it, so even if they draft it, it's gonna be reviewed, but it's not gonna, doesn't seem to me that's going forward without everybody else kind of sign, because it goes to the board, goes to the police, goes to fire, goes to town.
Yeah, well, the reason why I'm saying on the minimize the impact of emergency services acting as first responders, that was SUNY's policy until the dormitory authority came down and said, no more of that.
Wow.
Yeah.
So maybe that needs to put a question, whether or not change that language then, because you're saying that that's not the current language now, right?
No.
Right.
See, the SUNY, it's...
Should we take that out?
Yeah.
We just take it out at all necessary times?
And train security personnel on site at all necessary times. And until they make the agreement, we don't know for what conditions who's acting as first responders. Anybody have a preference on the alternatives? Or should we leave them in for another discussion?
Another discussion.
Well, I'm just wondering, does the...
Picking one of these?
Can the IDAs create alternative pilots and make adjustments to pilots? Do they have that flexibility?
Yeah, there's some flexibility.
You know, I don't know what they're capable of.
I don't know what they're capable of. But obviously, anything that's 25 years, you want to think there's some flexibility to be escalation rates in it. And they deal with the taxing jurisdiction, agree to a different split, they got the capability of making the split of the taxes differently. So there is some flexibility in the idea, it doesn't have to come up. It was a rigid one, in fact...
You know, the...
Go ahead, you probably know better than I do.
No, 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 I wasn't commenting on that because I don't know, I can't write that stuff. On February 21st, we got an email from George with the updated section K, and then there were, like, I had sent him some comments, and it seemed like he wove them into this updated section, but I don't see any of them.
Ah-ha.
Wow. I need to go back and then see if he put any comments in.
I mean, he took the time of actually mentioning where each of these comments were located, on what page and what line number, but if you go to them, they're not there.
Oh, that's great.
So he may have just sent us a...
Maybe the page and line numbers changed, though.
No, they're not there at all. I'm searching for the key words. He may have, we may be looking at an older version.
So the email that's attached is page 17, doesn't really show anything?
What's that?
The page 17 of the thing, his revised thing, where he tells about what changes he's made.
I think so.
The changes haven't actually been made.
Right, so see if you can find any of those in this updated document.
I didn't bring that one out, I guess, I thought I brought it the whole time.
This has a revision date of 220. You said that 221 was...
He sent it on 221, though.
So he, I think he accidentally sent us an old version and not his updated version.
Well, except that there's a lot more pages.
Yeah, four more pages.
And it's different, I have the old one, I can't follow it at all from...
He's got 12, yeah.
It was 12 and...
Well, I'm just looking at the version that was attached to this Feb. 21 email.
Right.
Well, it is different from the original one, but it may not...
Well, it's absolutely different.
Isn't that strange?
But it's not updated.
All right, let's keep, let's keep plowing through, we'll follow up with that, changes to see. Your changes are on that chain sheet.
Yeah, they're listed, there are...
Okay, so we got them captured, we just have to make sure that when we go back into the document, they're there.
Well, yeah, but they're not.
But they're not.
But they're not, that's what I mean. Okay. I'm not sure what he was trying to do.
On page six, line 317, it says, "Village to, cost the town and the village to incur the increased cost of professional firefighters. I'd like to see and facilities inserted in there, because if they go with a career fire department, both stations do not meet the union requirements for professional firefighters."
Okay.
That's a $10 million.
Should there also be some examples?
Lots of facilities.
Buildings.
He's got buildings in there.
Because currently, right now, the, both stations do not meet OSHA requirements.
We'll get the reasons. Okay. Page seven.
I'm guessing that's a long... All the stars and...
Some of them will get filled in, sort of, some will, you know, where do we get that number, what's that number, and then pull it out. We have to, hey, Jay?
Oh, can I go back? I'm curious about the mitigation number one. Tom, are there actual college students who do function as volunteer fire people? And their schedules permit and they manage to... Okay, that's great.
Okay, so I'm going to page eight. This is basically rehashed, some of the water supply.
I mean, I don't have any more specific comments because I sent mine over to George and...
All right. Does anybody have anything to rest of it? I don't want to beat it to death if we're just gonna... I'll get together with George, and I'll raise, see, and Tim, your issue is not getting those things in. We'll go over each of those things in section K, so when we send it out, you'll have a revised K. Hopefully, I captured everybody's comments. Whether I responded correctly in their opinion to their comments, that'll be another story. But you'll have to actually see it because I'll do something to it to make it a little bit cleaner. The only other two I have, I ask you to read over the phasing plan, so we'll basically ship that out to you as is.
It's already out.
Yeah, it's a brand new one today. And then, the only one was, oh, that we talked about last week, and Augusta had something on the energy, okay? But we can pick that up. There was one thing that's... Well, we can pick that up, there was one thing that's in the minutes on it that I wanted to-
Oh, okay.
Do you want me to remind you what you said?
I feel like it was just, who's gonna monitor this?
Okay. Let me go back and look at it again, and if I was keeping in mind, if we can-
On section K, do you, I mean, I know it's hard because George isn't here, I mean, you can't answer, but do you anticipate that getting released to us within the next week or so?
I, well, the anticipation now is that we have docked it up every one of the findings statements, including the ones you've seen and not seen. Now they're, is to put it all together, to read it as one entire document. I bring out things like white roofs and light shaded roofs and colored roofs and things like that. I mean, you gotta read the whole document to find out are you consistent with the way through it. And we've done this in three different meetings and three different sections. So I have George put the whole thing together. Hopefully, this week, get the board an opportunity to read it, and I think probably at that time we'll-
So you only anticipate giving us a copy of section K separately?
Probably the whole thing. Okay, I mean, there's-
Hope would be within the next week or something?
Yeah, that's, well, when we get it, you should be able to get it too. I mean, you need the actual time to read it to find out.
I think, Jim, right, we'd like to see it in advance of the 24th meeting.
Oh, no, I don't like handing things out ahead of meeting, because nobody has any time to prepare for it. I'll get together with George and the goal is to, that's what I told him on the phone today, was the goal to get through all of them, let them put it together, give them a week to put it together, send it out, give the board a week to do it, we'll send you a copy at that time. Because the board has seen everything, and has made all their comments on it. How it flows, and did we miss anything, is what we're gonna be doing next. But you should be able to get a shot at, taking a look at it. Team, we took your name in vain a number of times and things like that, so. But that's what, that's the thing, okay?
You're thinking, as far as adoption, you're a date with that, or?
I'm looking to see if we, you know, depending on how comfortable the board is with it on the next meeting, of taking a vote on it. We may have to tweak something after the fact, but if it's minor, um-
But we haven't even discussed some of the ones that we haven't discussed yet.
Yeah, we've discussed all the sections.
Phasing, that's a-
Well, we haven't, have we really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I was missing one.
That's right, you missed the first batch.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. And to the extent that you've read something in there, and in the, I'll call it the near final copy, the pen to open the copy, I would hope, that's something that you had commented on in the first section, the section that missed. Bring it up then, and we'll do it then. To the extent there are editorial additions, and you can get them to George before he finalizes it. But if you want the board to discuss it.
So, will we be discussing the phasing?
Yeah.
At the next meeting?
That just came out.
That just came out. Well, we filled in another, it was a pretty strict vote, we had the old one out there. And again, it's rather short and factual, if there's something that we wanna tweak or say something or ask on the next meeting, we could ask on that one. It's not a lot of philosophical points in that one. But, yeah, right, Lynn, if you missed anything, and you got notes on it that you didn't see, except for the ones that we already talked about, send them off to George so he gets, so he doesn't write up a draft and then says, "Oh, I could've put that in easily enough on that day." Okay? With that, I think, as the clock is approaching nine-
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.